It's this clock, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America, and we choose a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have no guests. So we'll move on to 3.01, student recognitions, is there any that the admin team would like to do tonight?
I have two recognitions for staff, actually. The first one is that Mrs. Barnes finished her special ed, you know, supervision, special education supervisory endorsement program will be done on Thursday. Congratulations. And Mrs. Kraft finished her last class for her second first degree, so. And I have my students of the month, do you want me to wait till admin report? They weren't in my report because we hadn't finished voting.
Doing now.
I think you do now, yeah.
Alright, so freshman student of the month was Ashley Zillstar, sophomore was Morgan McManus, junior was Maple Small, senior was Ricky Yu, and our Be a Buddy Not a Bully program, or winner with Rosewood County Health, was Macy Sherman.
Alright. I'll go next, I guess. Student of the week, we had Jackson Crook, Grayson Barnes, Kaya Sherman, Ashley Yu, Grayson Bolton, Keishon Markey, Trinity McCanney, Taishan Small, Ethan Realbird, Britten Steer, Naveya Van Der Sloot, and Andrew Hollins. And sixth grade student of the month was Ashley Yu.
Very good.
Alright, and your November bucket fillers from Pine Butte Elementary. Here we go. Pretty short list this month, Kaylee Eldridge, Haley Limpy, Tom Longtime Sleeping, Ethan Petros twice, Hazel Small, and Alan Nyman.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving right along. 4.01, this is the point in the meeting where comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on the general items will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views or written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be read up to the attention report during the meeting. Do we have any public comment or public participation? Dan.
Yeah, I've got three totally unrelated topics. First, thank you for the pool, that is phenomenal. I love the pool. Second is the, um, the, the season pass. I, our family can't even take advantage of that because our fall is so busy. And so I told you the basketball season actually costs $30 more per person to do a season pass than it does to pay the $12 a game per person. And, um, so I would suggest that maybe consider doing like a season, like a sports season pass in addition to the year long pass. We've never offered that before, if I know it, but it might be very beneficial. And then also, to me, the gate price is way too high. Like in the years past, I've looked out over the, the stands. We have so many more community members coming forward than we do now. Like I was just looking to see if there's anybody other than a parent or a grandparent in the stands, and I could not see that many that weren't a grandparent or a parent. And I just love that in years past, community participation at the athletic events has been. Um, so just a thought, but it, but just to consider possibly doing a, like a basketball, volleyball, football pass for those parents who might take advantage of that. And then the third thing, academically speaking, um, we, my son does not have a single science class this semester, um, this year, actually, and he's a junior. And, um, so I'm looking at Dole Life College, and Dole Life College has six grade, grade science classes for this coming semester. And one of the things that we really need, that I think that if there's any way that we could work with Dole Life College, because if you guys could do this, we might be one of the few colleges in this, or two high schools in the state that could actually recommend that your high school senior graduate with an AA or AS degree while they also graduate with a diploma. Because this last year, beginning in the summer, going year round, my oldest son is gonna finish his AS degree by the end of the summer. That was one year. That's one year. So it usually is a two-year program, and he took a gap year, which we definitely needed him on the ranch, but he is gonna finish his AS degree by the end of the summer. And so, looking at my, gonna be senior next year, his offerings in science here are pretty dismal at the moment, hopefully that will change. And that's why we didn't, weren't able to actually schedule him at the beginning of the semester with other science classes he'd taken, everything that was offered. That was, that was the level he needed, and maybe we have others that are coming up. But anyway, just a thought, because it'd be a phenomenal opportunity and a real, um, uh, would be a, you know, just a, a, a magnet for parents to know, and, and summer is free, so are books and so is lunch. You know, so your kid can go full term, all summer, free. And, you know, and tuition for my son is less than I paid in 1984 at Dole Life College. I mean, that's amazing. He pays less and he's taking 16 credit systems. So it's amazing. So thank you. I have it. No, I need most of that for a lot. Oh, yeah, I did that. Yeah.
Moving right along, uh, 6.01, consent agenda.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, motion second. Uh, with that, I'll go to the vote. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Come on, it's calendar.
We weren't sure what activities report meant on there. Because Tom does a report like every work session anyway. So unless somebody could remember if that was something specific that we needed, other than, I think we can just.
Every month, anyway.
Thank you, Tom. Good job.
Good job, Tom.
Thank you for y'all.
Thank you.
We have an old business, so we'll move right into new business, 9.01. Ms. Nessel.
I am recommending Taylor Verdas as a district paraprofessional. Um, Taylor has been working as a sub at the high school in my department all fall. She has done an excellent job, um, and she is starting classes, or is taking classes at Dole Life, and plans to become a teacher. I'd like to keep her going.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Taylor Verdas as district paraprofessional for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie. Serena.
Aye.
Thank you.
Extracurricular. Mr. Soule.
What do you have to do with ball schools at once, or?
Uh, with the coaches, we'll just. One at a time, yeah.
Um, so I would like to recommend the following. Frank Brat Middle School, uh, sit, coaches as assistant track coaches for rehire. Jeanette Oswald.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Jeanette Oswald, assistant track coach for FBMS for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Okay, I would also like to nominate, or excuse me, I'd like to recommend Angie Courier as Frank Brat Middle School Assistant Track Coach.
And then the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Angie Courier, Assistant FBMS Track Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Second. Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
And I would also like to recommend Brian Blanchard as an assistant track coach for Frank Brat Middle School for the 24-25 school year.
I move Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Brian Blanchard, FBMS Assistant Track Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Okay, I would like to recommend Sable Kersman as assistant golf coach for Colchester High School for the 24-25 school year.
I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Sable Kersman, CHS Assistant Golf Coach for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Motion second, any further public comment on this? Wade. Oh, any for the board, sorry.
I don't have any further.
Does anybody else? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Vanya Big Left Hand as an assistant track coach for Colchester High School for the 24-25 school year.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Vanya Big Left Hand, Assistant Track Coach for CHS for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Okay, I would also like to recommend Christine Bonet as an assistant track coach for Colchester High School for the 24-25 school year.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Christine Bonet for CHS Assistant Track Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
And finally, I would like to recommend Johnny Dilworth as an assistant track coach for Colchester High School for the 24-25 school year.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Johnny Dilworth, CHS Assistant Track Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Thank you. Perfect. Moving right along, handbook 9.03. Okay, uh, we got three handbooks that we reviewed and updated, and so just like to recommend the supervision of instruction, employee handbook, and district substitute handbook be adopted by the board.
Any major changes besides just the year dates and names?
Couple policies that have been adopted.
Yeah, pretty minor right now, but we think we're gonna do more overhauling as the year goes on, but we need to get these in place for some things right now with evaluations and whatnot, so.
Okay.
I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the following handbooks for 24-25 school year is presented. Supervision of Instruction, Employee Handbook, and District Substitute Handbook.
One second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Let's see here. 9.04, I'd like to recommend, uh, for district substitute for hire, Richard McDougall.
I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Richard McDougall for district substitute for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Without going to the vote, Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
You made that sign. 9.05, course approval. Mr. Kircher.
Alright. This is the long-winded portion of the meeting, I apologize in advance, but I know there's been, I talked amongst the board about the number of courses that we offer at Colchester High School. And so I wanted just to make sure that you guys know that we're paying homage to that by doing our homework and making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row prior to proposing a course, another course offering at the high school. And I'll tell you what, Wendy Dennehy really shouldered a lot of the work. She's, as far as English learners are concerned, she's probably our most experienced staff member. And she was meticulous with her research. She was meticulous about finding these course offerings through the OPI. And, uh, I'm just lucky that I get a chance to sit down with her and just learn, and just go along for the ride. She's amazing as far as just the, the quality of work that she puts into things. When I sat down and did my research, the things that I looked into and the conclusions that I arrived at aligned with the things that she arrived at as well. Evan Stewart was also huge about getting us the technology that we need to make this plan work for English language learners. And so essentially, I guess I'm gonna story you a little bit here. So essentially, what we have is, is one student that was identified as an English learner last year. We had a plan in place to offer this student with, I'm gonna call it student-driven technology, that was used to provide translations for different course documents, different materials in classes. Student also had a pen that he could run across, um, English text and would translate it to the first language. What we found after reviewing the data is that these accommodations weren't effective for the student. Um, the data that we collected was quarterly and semester grades, and also behavioral data, most of which were not trending in the direction that we would like to see. And so we met with the high school teachers that served this particular student to come up with a plan, and I've gotta pat all of them on the back. This is a very stressful time of year for high school teachers, for all teachers in general. Just you pack so much between Thanksgiving and Christmas into the schedule, and it's just, the holiday season in general is just very stressful. I know they had about a million things to do at night, and they just hung in there until we had a really solid plan in place. And, uh, I talked with Evan about it afterwards, and he put it best. If our teachers are willing to put that much effort into one student, just imagine what they're doing for all the kids that we serve here. It's, it's really a humbling thought, it was one of those moments where it's like, man, I'm really proud to be here. And that's, that's pretty neat. So we came up with a plan, and really if you look at the literature on what constitutes a good English language program, it's, it's pretty vast. Actually, it goes from, anywhere from tier-two interventions where you have small group instruction all the way to, uh, machine translative technology. So you have really closely working with humans to really not working with humans at all. And so it's, it's pretty wide and far-reaching. But if I was really just to sandwich it all together, quality EL programs constitute two things. One, you remove language barriers for students. And two, you provide students who are identified as English learners with equal access to course content as their peers. So we have to have those two pieces together, they're related, they're two sides of the same coin. You have to have them both in order to adequately serve an English learner. And so with those technologies that we had in place, we were really just meeting one side of the coin. We were just trying to gain access for this student to the curriculum content. And we really weren't necessarily taking down the barriers. Now, we upped our game a little bit, instead of having student-driven technology, we got technology into the hands of our teachers. So this is kinda cool. They're able to take the readings for class and translate them using a tablet, print them off, and get the readings for the day to the student, and the course, um, the, the homework for the course. They're also able to scan and translate that for the student in the student's first language. The student can hand-write this, uh, the answers to the homework in the student's first language. They can translate it back to English for grading, which is really neat technology. That gives the student the opportunity to have access to curriculum content, that's the same as their peers. So we're still missing the other side of the coin, and to address that, we have to talk about Ed Law, just for a second here. There's a really famous case, Lau versus Nichols, comes out of San Francisco, California, where some Chinese-American students were placed in the San Francisco school district. They were placed in the general education classroom, provided the same educational opportunity as their peers, with very little accommodations. It was kind of a sink-or-swim sort of situation. And as you can imagine, with little to no accommodations, it didn't go well. And so, the school district was taken to the courts as they were in violation of civil rights. And it went all the way to the Supreme Court. And Supreme Court decided that, yes, even though students were given the same opportunity at curriculum content as their peers, the fact that they were sitting in a classroom where they did not understand English, and English was the primary language being used, they were denied educational opportunity, which is a violation of their civil rights. I would say that we are still, in our district, probably in violation of that. Our response, then, is these courses, where we can offer English-specific instruction for students to help lower, take away that barrier of the English language. And so, and if you think about it, in any class, a good portion of the content that is disseminated is verbal content. And so really, if a student is sitting in a course where most of the instruction is verbal, how much are they really getting out of it if they're not quite proficient in English? So this is our response to that, where we can take a student out of a elective course, put them in this elective course, we're still, we're not taking away their opportunity at graduating on time. They still are getting elective course for an elective course, so we're not discriminating against the student there. But we're taking elective course, putting them in an elective course with the intent of giving them English-specific instruction. Any questions for me on that? Alright, so, do you want me to do one at a time, or you want me to do them both? Yeah, you can do both. Well, okay. Um, I would like to recommend that we add 01008 and 51008, English as a second language to the course offerings at Colchester Public Schools.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves course 01008 and course 51008. Required courses by the OPI for ESL.
Second. Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
Do we have somebody that can fill this and teach it?
Yeah, and, so, I mean, it, it, so, not to get too far into this, but we're gonna do, use it as a pull-out program instead of a push-in program. And so you don't have to have an ESL-specific teacher for that, you can just have a qualified teacher or other school staff is what it says in the guidance from OPI.
You guys are on board.
Now, the student is already being pulled for, um, one class period a day to receive direct instruction in a reading intervention program. But we actually, what we learned going through this, and like Derek said, Woody did a phenomenal job, and I appreciate him and Tazan also, but, um, they have to have two to three hours of replacement instruction. So we're gonna reply, provide two hours, and then we'll provide support in the classes. But I also want to give a kudos to our teachers because Marietta used her grant money to get the pens that we started with, and then a couple other teachers did, and then two teachers, um, used their own money to purchase translating earbuds that he, the child could use in the classroom. And so, um, they just really stepped up. And then, but then the deeper we got in this, it was like, whoa, we're not doing enough, like, we require a lot to do this. So, um, Derek jumped right in, and I started organizing, so I appreciate that.
Very good.
Ms. Olds.
Mr. Bailey.
You guys.
Alright, without going to the vote, Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
I think it's something that you guys will be using more and more. 9.06. Which is the, uh, association letter to intend to negotiate. Uh, Terry's not here tonight, but I did speak to her via email today on a few of these dates, and I actually asked her if she even really wanted to do the training with Max. And she's gonna get, she's gonna talk to her, do it and get back to me, so. This might not be, uh.
Because most of us have already gone through that.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's pretty much gone through it, so. I'll just wait to hear back from Tony, or I'm sorry, from Terry, and then we'll, uh, go from there, but. We might not do the training, we might just write.
Are you going to appoint people to do that?
Um, I would, I'm not gonna appoint, I would rather ask. Who would like to?
So what are, what are our names?
Well, those, I think, those were the training days, so I'd rather wait to hear back from Terry on those.
Yeah.
And then if they, if she feels, because she sent her and, uh, I believe it was Connie. Right? I've already gone through it.
Oh, yeah.
So, and I told her that the district probably wouldn't. I mean, we would show up if, if they wanted to do it, but we didn't need to.
We've all gone through it, I think.
We've all gone through it, so.
Angie.
It's. It is what it is. But, uh, yeah, at this point, if there's anybody that would like to volunteer, I'll take that, if not, I will.
I'd rather.
We'll see who you go with.
It's not that I'd go like, I mean, I, I would do it, I don't, I don't have a problem doing it, but, it doesn't matter.
I would do it again, too, I mean, I don't care.
Okay. Tiff, not for whatever.
I would prefer not.
Okay. Angie.
I would do it.
Well, then I'll appoint Serena and Angie, and then I will be the, uh.
Alternate.
Alternate.
Okay.
Works.
Yep.
I have enough for you and you moving forward then anyways, so, I'll be fine.
Okay.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees agrees to negotiate the collective bargaining agreement as requested by the Colchester Classified Association. Second.
Okay, motion second. Not really much public comment on this, so I'll move to the vote. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
So, that'll be fine. Perfect. Uh, moving right along, handbook 9.07. Just discuss community meeting after the November 20th. Uh, RFQs still out till Friday, correct? Yeah, thirteen, so. After, I think, Monday, then the, what would that be, the fifteenth, sixteenth, sixteenth? I'll just try to reach out to you guys individually, get your thoughts. I'm kind of already swinging one way, I'm not gonna hold a special meeting, we're just going to go over those RFQs. If we're gonna go after the bigger, broader, with facilities included, which I think is probably best, we could take a look at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. We'll just assign and get them going right away. There's, um, if any of you are there after the meeting, Wade and I. We got the impression we need to get moving on this as soon as we can, so we'll be signing that as soon as we can, and getting them going right away. So I would like to see some numbers, some really hard numbers, and I wanna get that out there before the, uh, uh, May.
Election.
Election, so.
So are we coming up with a priority list of items to put on there, or is that what we're using that deferred maintenance list for?
That's what we're gonna use that deferred maintenance list for.
Okay.
So, we have, and I don't want to set priorities as just, we're setting the priority, one, number one, as track and field and stadium. It, I'm not sold on track and field and stadium priority one. Priority one for me is to get the numbers out there so we can get the bond out there, that's priority one. But being very transparent in what we're gonna do with that money. So, and listing out those things, having that continuous improvement plan put in place with that deferred maintenance list.
And the maintenance plan.
Everything.
All of that.
Yes.
Because I think that's what I've heard, is that if we could send a letter out explaining what we'll do with the money, and then sit, along with that, send a letter of like a proposed maintenance plan. A rough idea of how we're going to maintain this. a rough idea of how we're going to maintain this. That's what I've heard people are really wanting to know. And I don't think that would be a problem. We sent a letter out. We've sent a letter out for a couple of years now, explaining the lettuces and stuff. So.
It'll be pretty much the same way as we go about lettuces. This is what we're looking for, this is what we're going to do with it, and then we're going to, we're going to lean on this engineering company, architect, or whatever you want, to help us with that CIP. We've kind of started that, but it's going to be pretty much black and white. But like I said, I'm not setting a priority yet.
Right, and I, I mean, this has come up in the deferred maintenance list, but I met with each one of the admin, the principals, excuse me, today, and just kind of went over the big-ticket items. Because, I mean, we talked about some of the smaller ticket items, too, but the big-ticket items, so that we can have a list as a board to be able to say, yes, we need, let's put that on there. This is maybe five years out, but let's put it on there anyways. Or this is 10 years out, let's put it on there anyways, because we want to look at, you know, a longer horizon as far as, you know, projects go, but then also maintenance goes, so. So, I mean, we can wait and go through the deferred maintenance list in a minute when it comes up, or we can do it now, whichever one you'd like to. Is there any way we can get that up on the website?
Want to plug in, or do you want to just go?
He's got, which one was it?
I don't know, I'm wondering, so, this one is. For this bond, are we, like, looking at 10 years down the road? Is that what we want to present?
I really think we look at a 20-year horizon. And if there is, you know, we talked about some projects that, right now, I mean, they're functioning, but five, 10 years down the road, they'll probably need to be replaced or whatever. And so I think looking at that and going with 20-year horizon, we can at least set up those dates of saying, okay, you know, here's what the five-year looks like. You know, we can set that bond money aside or whatever, and spend this now, and capture that.
I would like to leave it available for future boards and administrators if they want after this.
Yep.
Here's your priority list.
So if the bond gets passed for certain items, they're going to have to stick to those items.
They're going to have to stick to those, right? But I also think we still need to pursue other monies outside of that bond. To help us offset for future, so. But yes, I want to be very open, very transparent on what the first five years looks like, and then what's the next five years look like, and then blah, 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 moving down the line. So there's already a plan in place for future. Like I said, there's, Wade was there afterwards, and there's a certain sense of urgency to get this done. If we're going to do this, now is the time to do that. So like I said, I.
Well, I know Gary was talking about taxes, how they're going to be the lowest they're ever going to be. So it would be a good time to do it.
It's a good time to do it now, so. So I'm not trying to rush this process, but I am trying to move this process, so.
I think it's a rush, we've been talking about this.
We have, and not only us.
For us, too.
Quite a bit for us, so I would just like to get this done. Moving forward, so I think we have a, we've had more than a few interested companies in it.
Oh, good. I thought my next question was going to be, is if we've gotten.
Yes. But I don't want to reinvent the wheel either with some of these projects. That just costs more, so I'm keeping that in mind as well. But we'll have a, like I said, next week, I'll reach out individually, and we'll come up with something. Like I said, we're not going to have a meeting, we're just going to, we're just going to have Scott say go. With that, Wade, if you want to.
We can do extracurricular, that extracurricular budget, and then do that deferred maintenance, that's okay.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
This is another discussion point. I know, I've heard a lot about it, I know Serena's heard a lot about it, and I'm sure the rest of you've heard a lot about it. With that, Serena, I'll let you go ahead.
So after you did the fall sports parent meeting, I guess, and you had said, like, we need to raise money, you know, we need to be more careful with our money, basically. I had a bunch of phone calls after that. Everyone's like, where's the money? What happened to all the money? So I pulled up all of the extracurricular budgets back like 10 years, the ones that appear, the vouchers, I guess, that appear in the board docs. And I pulled that athletics number, and it goes from like 50,000 down to three, up to 50, down to three. It's really cyclical. And right now, you're sitting at 18, so you're not, I mean, I don't think we're in like dire needs. And the money that did go when it was up was like half the mat purchased for wrestling, all the football helmets. So I didn't see anything in that 10-year span that wasn't unjustified or looked like we were wasting money at some point. So I just want you to know, I think we're in good shape, just like we've always been. I mean, I don't think anyone expects athletics to be like a cash cow for the district. You know, we're lucky if they can maintain themselves, but I don't think any of us are expecting that to happen. These extracurriculars are important for the kids, because they learn leadership, resilience, teamwork, you know, all of that. So I don't think that we need to push our kids to do fundraising at this point. I think we've seen a bunch of the coaches doing their own fundraising for certain things. Like I know Owen did fundraising for summer camps for this coming summer to try to help more of his kids get there. And I think that's completely fine, if coaches want to do stuff like that. And I think that piece of the communication was kind of missing, because people see Owen raising money, and they're like, well, why does the football team have to raise money? And it's like, the school's not making them raise money. You know, they're choosing to raise money for, to set themselves up good for the summer. And so I just want to be clear about what we've been hearing. I think, I think we're in a good place. I'm not worried about it. I mean.
And again, thank you. I just, I know, you know, we're in a position where we do spend a lot on athletic things, and there are, you know, things that haven't been replaced in a while, or things that we need to get more of. And they're fairly expensive ticket items, and like we talked about for the middle school, to get them football uniforms and football helmets, which we'll be looking at, you know, trying to get some grants and some funding for that. And that's not something that we're going to do every single year. So, and so, so some of this stuff is, you know, we're trying to be more cognizant, and we're trying to take better care of the money that's given to us. You know, so that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from with that, is, and I do, the driving force behind it is to give the kids the best experience possible, so that, you know, so that they have nice things, so that they have uniforms that fit, so that they have, you know, basketballs that are not going flat, and volleyballs that are not going flat, and a net system that doesn't weigh 140 pounds. You know, so, so that's, that's kind of where that concern was coming from. And to then have some money to do things like improve the weight rooms, and, you know, and have things that we can provide to them. Like I said, I, you know, I guess I didn't mean to make it sound like it was, you know, we're broke, or nothing, but like, there, but there are things that we want to get, you know, that are, that, you know, haven't necessarily been addressed, and I think, you know, it would be nice to have them. So thank you, that's comforting to hear after, because that does keep me up at night, you know. And I know it keeps Chris up at night, too, as, you know, as we're talking back and forth on, you know, what, you know, where's this going to come from, where's that going to come from? How are we going to pay for hotel rooms? How are we going to, you know, and then things like that. And so, you know, it's kind of something that's been, but it's been a point for me. And I'm trying to, again, take care of the district's resources, the district's assets, and do the right thing by the district. So, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Is there like an inventory list of needs? So you mean, we can look at a budget, like, okay, we know we need uniforms for the middle school this year. We need, I mean, could we get a list like that?
It used to kind of be under rotation, didn't it?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Is there a rotation list so that, so you could look at it in a broader picture and go, okay, we're going to be okay, or we're going to be short, or?
And some of the things, like, like the helmets have, I think it's a, it's either a five or a 10-year shelf life. And so, you know, as they go, and those are about $350 apiece, which I'm getting different bids right now for the ones for the middle school. It's just having the time to do it and get that information, and then to work out what we want. You know, we're going to be sending off both schools, the ones we have, we're going to be sending them off for refurbishment. And that's about $9,000 right in there. And that is every year.
We're not dissuading fundraising, though, either, by any means.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily want it directed from the school or anybody here. Like, if somebody wanted to have a fundraiser or a raffle for, let's just say something specific, like warm-ups for the basketball team, whether it be middle school or high school, whatever, I don't care. Doesn't matter, as long as that's transparent up front, this is what we're doing. I'm selling this for this, fine. If the committee wants to get a part of that in the PTO and everybody else, great, we're all for that, right? And, or if they just want to have a fundraiser for the athletics, that's fine, or activities, that's fine. That can go in the activities, all that, account, whatnot, but yeah. There was some, why are we doing this? Are we in trouble?
No. Where does the money go?
You know, and coming from where I come from, the fundraising aspect of it is part of the kids, you know, that was, that was always part of the experience of the kids. And yeah, programs would raise money, and then they would, in turn, use that for, you know, for the better of the program. I mean, I, you know, one of the things that I did last year, and will try again to do this year, and I understand, we talked about doing seasonal, seasonal awards presentations, but I got a whole lot of really good feedback about doing that banquet last year. You know, from, and it was nice to see our entire community sit down as a family and recognize all the kids. You know, and that was, and I think that was really cool.
You can still do that at the end of the year. I still think you need to do those small ones throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, you can have the big one and have all those students back, right?
Yeah.
But I do agree with you, you kind of miss some of the senior stuff. Some of those kids get, you know what I mean? They just get kind of lost, but I like your, your end of the year vote, for sure. But I think we have time during the day for an hour or an hour and a half, whether it be after the season or whatnot, just to recognize those kids now. Get them their letters, if they have the jackets, get them on there so they have them. And then at the end of the year, have that all-encompassing one, too, so.
Do you see that being an evening thing, or like just a school day assembly, that parents could come to?
I think it's during the school day that parents are, you know, can come do that. Just get them recognized right away, get them a letter.
To get a letter, right? I think that's what the feedback we're getting is, they feel like they're missing. Like, I want my letter, I want to be able to show what I have. Yeah, and I think it's during the day, when it appears.
That's a nice thing.
Yeah, what a great way to, yeah, for your peers to see your accomplishments.
And I'm going back, I'm going way back, showing my age now. It's been a minute, all right? So we had those during, you know, it was after every season, we got them.
In the 1900s.
In the 1900s, we did this, so like I said, it wasn't, we had the end of one, we had the big one, but we had those small ones throughout the year, too, that got everybody recognized. We got our letters, and got them on our jackets, and it was, was way feeling. Yeah.
Yeah, but the budget looks normal to me. I mean, I didn't see anything that looked.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Because I go straight to the numbers when people are like, where's the money? I'm like, let's find out. Let's look at 10 years. So, yeah, it always just does that. I mean, sometimes it dips down to like 2,000, which is probably really scary, but.
Yes, it's terrifying.
But I mean, we have money in other places that if it, I don't want our kids to feel like they're a burden, and I don't want our parents to feel like they're a burden. I mean, and I also don't want to be wasteful with money, but we have money that we can use if we need it. I do appreciate, though, now that the uniforms are not being sent home with the kids, that's going to make those last longer. Because I know that's why basketball had to have new ones, because they didn't have enough shorts, you know? So now that the coaches are keeping the uniforms and washing them themselves, or the managers are, they're going to last a lot longer than when they were just going home with kids.
They're changing it a few years, those we quit ordering the Jordan and the Nike uniforms, because those didn't always get turned in. And I think they're doing a much better job inventorying now. So, right, like, you don't get shirt letter until you have turned your uniforms.
That was another thing, yes, we didn't do that either. But we're also, like I said, back in the 1900s, it was kind of carte blanche around here, right? There wasn't any worry about that stuff.
Right.
And there's, there's parents now that grew up in those, they're going, what are we fundraising for? Well, we all know, not everybody knows, times have changed, you know? We're not where we were when I graduated, or some of us graduated, but we're not.
And they did uniforms from the school?
Right, we're not that far.
No, they're still in the closet, actually, they're the yellow ones.
Is there, is there a way to be more transparent to the coaches of what's coming out of that budget? So they don't panic as much?
We look at the vouchers every single time.
And they have access to that, right?
That's what I did, yeah.
So maybe Tom, that's something you can have them look at, too. Because I think they're feeling, it's a panic from the coaches a little bit. And I think as long as they know, like, this is what we're buying, there's money in there.
I think the coaches and Tom are being a little too conservative right now.
Winter is hard, though, because winter is an expensive season.
It is an expensive season. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of traveling.
Official fees.
Right, official fees, exactly. Your big ones are your basketball and your wrestling, and there always will be.
Yeah, we won't get a, you know, $9,000 check for the district basketball tournament this year, which would allow.
I think they're going to find out that it's not going to work out so well.
I get a $1000 extra.
That'll be bad.
So, and I can run a report anytime they want one, anytime a sponsor wants one.
And I think maybe that's it, just tell them, run a report, and look at where the.
Terry can.
I think that would calm some of that, too. That's, because that's what I'm getting, where's the money? Like, well, there's a report, right? So, I think.
We will always accept help, though, if they want to help, that's fine, like I said. But if they want to run a raffle or do any kind of fundraising, just be very, this is what it's for. We're just helping out.
And I've tried to do that, and I've had, you know, coaches that have come to me and asked, well, what do we need this for? Well, you know, spend a lot of money on hotel rooms.
And kudos to those coaches that want to do it.
Right.
But that doesn't mean just because this person did it, that the next one's, oh, okay, do it as well.
And I apologize, I don't think that I, you know, I haven't meant intentionally to say, you know, you all need to do this, you all need to bring in X.
No, I don't think it was you, I think it was just, they're doing it. But, oh my God, should we be doing it? You know what I mean? Yeah, so.
I think people initially saw the football one, and it was right after that parent meeting. And it, those two things in combination, like.
And that's exactly, you know, you're talking with Owen about it, that's what he wanted to use it for, was, they wanted to be able to do that, and the parent organization wanted to be able to get the kids, you know, kind of like a warm-up outfit to wear that would be theirs. And, you know, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's good, you know? Cross-country went out and fundraised to get themselves warm-ups, so they have warm-ups, you know, going forward. So, yeah, it's, it's nice to see. And I think if the kids, you know, if the kids do have to put a little bit of work into getting something, that's going to give them more skin in the game, and they're going to think, they're going to think a little more, you know, before they chuck their helmet across the locker room, or before, you know, they leave their pants sitting on the field at a track meet. You know, like, they're going to take a little more ownership, because they're like, hey, wait, I sweated and I worked for that. You know, so, no, I need to take care of it. And so part of it is part of that building responsibility, teamwork.
Yep, and if those items are checked out to that kid, they're responsible for those items. If they destroy them within the season, that goes onto their bill, that they, like, their library books, they can't graduate until that's paid.
That was the other reason why we went away from Nike and Jordan and that kind of stuff, because we could only usually reorder for a year afterward, they really have them. And when we start going with ESN, number one, a lot of their things are reversible. So they can use their less money in the long run. But they also guarantee that you can reorder for up to 10 years. So you can replace pieces of those you need to, which helps.
And there's, we were kind of talking about that, too. You know, there's a lot of parents in this town, myself included, that even at the middle school level. You know, there's a lot of parents in town, myself included, that even at the middle school level, you know, if there was FBMS football jackets with Knox on it, I'm, I'm fucking, you know, I'm being that, absolutely. Cause it just, you know, over the years, right? There's a football jacket with your name on it when you were still a little shit, right? And now you're done and gone. So, like I said, there's, there's things out there that I know a lot of parents would put up for, absolutely, so. Anyway, thank you for bringing that up, bringing this out, like, so, with that.
Wait to take.
Wait to take it.
Alright, so.
Don't eat those special.
I do, I, I named it myself. No, um, uh, so just to, to remind you, uh, so there's three tabs on this, uh, one, one's the maintenance, one's the capital projects, one's the centralization. Um, we will get to the centralization and the, um, the maintenance, uh, those tabs. But what I, what I focused in on, uh, this week was the, the capital projects. Um, so we'll go through that tabs. Um, so, uh, when I, I met with the, the principals, um, we talked about the big ticket items. And, and when I, when I say big, big, big ticket items, um, I, I was meaning anything from, you know, hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars. And so, I didn't want any of the, the smaller stuff to, to get into this. Um, but, but I put this list together, um, that, that shows, and all the, the yellow highlighted are the ones that, that I added today from, from our discussions. And so, um, you know, there, there are still some on there that, that were there before. Um, but, but you can kind of see the ones that, that were added today. Um, I, I mean, if, if we wanna go through these one by one, um, if we wanna look at these, um, and, and just kind of put our, put our stamp of, yeah, let's, let's do that one, let's add that, uh, project into the, the design, um, that, that we have, you know, whoever wins that RFQ, um, that's really, my intent was to, to put a comprehensive list, list together and then we can, we can say yes or no or maybe to, to, to some of these projects. Um, and, uh, just to clarify a couple of them, so, uh, number seven there, uh, that bus drop off and employee parking, uh, parent drop, drop off redesign, um, so I talked to Bart a little bit today about, um, how, I mean, it, when, when a, when a kid gets dropped off, they're, they're gonna wanna run as, you know, as short a distance as possible to get to the school. So they're gonna wanna run right across the, uh, the parking lot, um, through the buses, whatever. And, uh, and so that, um, with, with the way that that's situated, it's, it's, it's a safety concern. And, uh, and, and really, um, if there is a redesign of, of that parking lot, um, to, to make it accessible for buses and have it separate for the, the drop offs and then, uh, and then also employee parking possibly being somewhere else. Um, we looked at the, uh, the, the layout of, of the, the property and we do have some room, um, to, to possibly do some things. There, there's some, some issues with, uh, you know, you've got the hill on one side and it goes right down into the, to the drainage. But I, I think there is some, some room for, for a design on that. Um, so, that's one that, that, uh, that we talked about, um, that, there was a, um, a kind of a redesign of, of what we got there. Um, uh, the cafeteria expansion, so currently, uh, Martin, I mean, go ahead and chime in if you'd like to, like, when we were, when we, when I was in there, um, they had one set of students in there. And then right as soon as those students were done, another set of students went into the cafeteria because it's just not big enough for the, for the whole, um, little school and, and they, they just have to stagger those, um, those lunches. Um, and, and then also, um, Mr. Bailey brought up that, uh, that from a safety standpoint, the, the school has all of those big picture windows, um, off their front, front side, uh, which could be an access point for, for someone who, who may have.
No intentions.
No intentions, yeah. And so, um, you know, um, looking at that, that structure, you know, I, I think that that, that would be a worthwhile project. Um, and, and, I mean, you know, that would be something that, um, you know, if you expanded that, that cafeteria out and then either removed all those windows or just put windows up, up above where it wasn't just a, um, you know, search shot, yeah.
Blind sight.
Yeah, um, type of thing, so, and do you wanna add to that?
No, and it's just kind of the, the inefficient use of resources and time when your lunch is spread out from 11:00 in the morning till 1:20 in the afternoon. It's crazy to manage. Yeah, and so, and then from the safety standpoint, I think you've kind of nailed everything else.
And, and we've got that same issue at the high school. Um, you come to that high school and it's just big picture windows into the cafeteria, same, same thing. Um, so, what's that?
It's like a fishbowl.
Yeah, it is, so.
There's, there's literally nowhere for students to go, if it happens during, you know, if something bad happened during lunchtime, we try to cram everybody in the kitchen and the caf- cafeteria, it's just, it's just a bad scenario.
So, so, uh, yeah, so that, that project, we, uh, we talked about that. Um, moving over to the high school, um, possibly replacing the coal boiler with natural gas. Um, and, uh, and maybe even splitting off the pool boiler versus just the, the boiler for, for the heating. Uh, let's see, auditorium seats and, and flooring, this is, this is one of the ones that, that, uh, Miss Mansell, and actually, there was one, uh, Mr. Bailey and I talked about, um, that is maybe not, not this year, but five or 10 years down the road. Um, I mean, if, if we're gonna go out for, for a large sum, adding this, I think would be, would be worthwhile. So, um, uh, let's see, um, lighting, school, lighting, building, gym, um, and, and this is one I know, uh, Steve, I think you, no, it was, uh, Robert and I met with, uh, with, um, Brady, uh, Colbert, and, and talked through a lot of the lighting, um, issues and, and projects. We haven't ever gotten a, a clear number from him, um, but, but it, it may be something big enough that, that it would, you know, could be added to this or if there's other money out there for, for that.
I think just the capacity for the load needs to be addressed first.
Yeah, yeah.
I talked to Brady yesterday and that's exactly what he said, and he said about.
Him and I, I, we run into each other all the time at work and we kinda dance us around. And he was paying attention to that, that meeting we had in November. And, uh, so that's something we need to, to talk about. Um, all these, I do not disagree on. I think.
I agree.
There's some big ticket items, um, not only here at, at Pineview, but at, at FBMS too. One that sticks out for me at FBMS all the time is the windows in the library. And then that one side absolutely has to be done.
Yeah.
Um, not only with your capital projects and the maintenance and the centralization, I think I went through all this, I've looked through all of it. I think it's well done, I think you're all right. I'd like to get that firm in place and then really. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Knock these down to priorities one, two, or three, right? First five, first 10, first 15, or whatever we're, we're gonna do.
And, and really, I, I think that, um, a lot of these, you can get a preliminary design or an engineer's estimate that, that would give you a decent idea of what it's gonna cost without doing a full design.
I agree.
And, and so, you know, I mean, like even the, the auditorium seating and flooring, I mean, we can get an engineer's estimate on that and just say, okay, 10 years from now, let's just add inflation to that and here's that, that number for, for to add to the bond calculation, so. Um, but there are some there that, that, I mean, have gotta go out for design, I mean, immediately, essentially. And so, so that's, I mean, and, and I guess if, if you, you all would put together kind of your list of what you think would need to go out immediately, I think that would help. Um, so the right when we get that RFQ, we can, um, you know, we can prioritize this and just go, um, you know, follow along.
Just send it to you, just send it to you.
Or just put it on here.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just know, and then when we have that first public meeting with that company, these are our priorities, one, two, three. These are, this is what we're looking for here, one, two, three, four, and, and moving down the line with, so. I'm not disagreeing with the auditorium, with the, yeah, all that stuff, but that, that's not something that has to be done now.
Right.
Right? There's, there's stuff on here that needs to be done and addressed now, and then there's, there's that list that needs to be done further down the road. But you're actually right, a lot of those don't need a design.
No.
So.
Is natural gas an option for us?
I believe it is because there is, the, the natural gas pipeline comes right across the, the, uh, the golf course. Um, so it, it is, it's.
It went to the dryer, right?
I think the only place that gets natural gas is the plant. Right, or was it the mine?
It was the coal dryer out of the mine.
It was, it was the coal dryer, I know that, yeah.
No, if that's a viable option, it's something we have to look into. I am, I know the whole Stoker thing and whatnot, um, what's, what's one of, I really, I'm, I'm, I can't speak for them because I don't speak for them or represent them, but I just don't feel like, if that mine is operating, this school is getting coal for our borders. That's just.
Well, and, and, and if it's, I mean, even if we were to parse off just the pool, because that, that boiler is, I mean, that is a special, you know, beast in itself. Um, and, uh, and so being able to, to regulate the pool the way that we want to regulate the pool, um, I think lends itself better to natural gas, um, than, than coal, so.
I'd like to know if we get natural gas, because I know we have those on-demand electric heaters for the pool too, which are very expensive. But then would propane be any better if we can get natural gas? Cause coal's cheap, I mean, it really is, so. I don't know, that would be something I would wanna see for sure.
And that, that, I think, um, I think that's, with, with each one of these projects, I think it's just going to be a, a, a project by project meeting um, with, with the principals, with, with us, with, with whoever, uh, to discuss these things and, and just say, alright, um, you know, what are, what are the issues and then, um, you know, can, is it possible, um, to actually do this, so.
Uh, this is a great start, I think it's there, really is.
Really good way.
And we have to have that capital improvement plan, which is pretty much what everybody wants, what, what you've put together here. And like I said, we just need to prioritize and then is it's gonna be, can we do this, can we manage this with this budget? Like you said, on that, some of these are gonna be very individual, like the pool. Which, you know, might take a little. I don't wanna open that.
Don't worry.
I was gonna say, just leave that alone.
So, but yeah, I think, uh, with your input from the administration, and I think you guys need to go through that and once we just go ahead and get on board with that firm, we just set that priority list.
I would be okay with that, like even becoming a committee, a small committee.
Yep, I'm.
That way I think we could get it done faster than waiting for all those board meetings.
Board meetings, yeah.
But I'm already on negotiations, so I.
We've already been.
We volunteered.
Well, I'm kind of appoint Wade to that committee for sure, he's already done so much.
Right here, you said, right here.
And, uh, just what we've been doing, I think we can head that up. And I would like administration on there for sure.
Yep.
Scott, all of the principals, even AD, Derek, uh, 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 all of you on that. And I actually wouldn't mind a few, uh, public, just to, so.
I would call Gary Perry, Jim Atchison, like those people that talked intelligently at that meeting and had good things to say, they would be great to be on that committee.
Yep.
There's a lot of people after the meeting that had a lot of things to say to Wade and I about, about, to go about this and what they expect, I guess, of us, so. I don't think that will be an issue of getting any public information, but I think we need to get to that RFQ. We put our, we, we do, we did our due diligence, even though we got mixed signals on, you don't have to, uh, you should do it. Well, we did it, so fine, we'll write that out and then come next week. Like I said, I'll reach out individually and we'll, we'll just, I'll get with Scott and we'll just make that and we'll get it going. And just, just. He's been doing a lot of work on the backside of this, a lot of his, I don't know, he's been in touch with several of these firms and they're, I know they're trumping at the bid on Scott, they're bothering him. What are you doing, what are you doing? So, you know, it's, it, this is, it's big enough, it's got the attention of.
Lots, yeah.
Lots of people.
Which is good.
Fair.
And just to give a teaser on the other two, um, the two tabs, um, so the, the maintenance, um, I think the, the first thing we need to do there is, um, either have Robert go through this, mark off what's been done or, um, you know, I mean, I, I've still gotta do a facilities tour of, of some of the facilities and, and just, we can mark that off as we go around, um, if it's done or if it's not done. Um, some of the stuff on the centralization tab, um, is confusing. Um, I was thinking that it's a tool and, uh, it, there, there are some things on there that it's like, well, what? I mean, I have no idea what that is. Um, and so, if, if, if all of us can look through it, um, and, and just, you know, put, put on, you know, in, in cell E, that this is what this means if I remember right. I mean, it's not, it's not spelled out real well, um, uh, let's see, I mean, uh, there, there were a couple on there. I, I have to look back, yeah. Anyways, there, there were a couple on there that, that were just kind of, um, uh, you know, do we need that? No, and, and, and in the, in the original, the firm maintenance, it had a number attached to it that did not even come close to what I thought it was talking about. You know, it'd be overestimated or, or whatever. So, so, yeah, that's, that'll be the next, I think, step with this whole list is, is to go through and, and say, it's still a viable project, it's, or it's done and, uh, or what in the world isn't, I don't know. Stick it on there, so.
I think we need to add that, what was it, the internet?
Oh, actually, we gotta get all that. I was, I looked at your capital projects, it's not on there, yeah, it needs to be on there, so. But, uh, yeah, like I said, those, I'd like to get this part done so that then we can really focus on, on that.
I thought Robert was gonna go through that maintenance list before this meeting.
Uh, I mean, I don't know if he has or not, but.
He said he would.
I'm sure if we reach out to him, he would, he's probably gone through some of it, but. I would like, not only do I want Robert's opinion, but I would also like, uh, Bart's ammunition and Robin's on that same time. I would like, I know it's December, but it would've been nice to have all of them in the same place, we could kinda, mm-mm, yeah. So, but we can do that. We have time, we don't have much time, I don't want to waste a lot of time, so.
Good job.
Thank you, Wade.
Thanks for the principal's.
The rest are done, right?
Yeah.
Yep. 10.02, super 10 evaluation, um, I'm gonna have Chris send this out to all of us. We're gonna do it in the January meeting. If you could have it back to Mrs. Diamond, she's gonna just, uh, combine them all together and we'll do it, uh, in January. So if you could get it to her as soon as possible. She said she'd love nothing more than to, uh, you know, move her Christmas break, but I said we can get it done today before that, so. And then, uh, like I said, we'll do that on Christmas. So, could you send that out, uh, tomorrow morning?
So is this, is this the phone right here?
Yes, yes, but she can send us a.
Fillable one.
A fillable one.
Yeah, don't, I prefer you type them. Someone transcribing it, right?
Yeah, you don't wanna.
I'm just gonna cop, copy and paste, copy and paste, so they're all in one.
You don't wanna.
Angie will be voice texting into it.
Yes, so Chris will send us out tomorrow and, uh, as soon as possible, please. If we can get them done before break for screen, that'd be great. Alright. With that, 10.03, the administration reports. I didn't have any, any questions. Except I did hear that the cats grossly overweight the grins at Pineview Elementary.
Yes, they did.
And it was, I also. And it was, I also heard that it might not be completely fair, because there might have been an administrator that, kind of leaning a certain way. That's coming from my daughter, it was like, well, Mr. Bailey said. That's like, well, he is the boss up there, so maybe you shouldn't look that way.
Well, the cats also, like, overwhelmed the Grizz on the front lawn.
And then Connie Mack, of course, there's a lot of influence for her, and her stuff, yeah, it was funny, and then she took, uh, um, she had, I think it was Nikki, Leanne sent us a photo of that, and it was, it was gross, cats, yeah, so, that was fun.
I have one good thing to add, um, I've now gotten rid of over sixty pieces of flooring, uh, half a dozen whiteboards, some kitchen items, and tables. Um, we've made over four hundred dollars now, and I have people coming all week, trying to see if I need admission, but, so, anyway, uh, yeah, I've got a trailer coming today, a little bunch of, and I've got more people coming tomorrow.
Nice.
See, Tom, money's flowing in.
I thought you were gonna help over there.
That was gym flooring, I mean, it probably should go into the athletics, but.
I just think I didn't get it out. We do need to figure out, though, like those were getting back into the back, there is a lot of old obsolete equipment, it looks like, that maybe was in the auto shop, and it says, do not use, do not start, or whatever, and it's so heavy, like, I mean, four or five people couldn't move it, so I don't know, is that something Pacific Steel would take, or how we get that out of there? But my goal is to get it cleaned up, so, but, all that's for.
I bet one of those recycling companies will take it.
I know they won't come get it anymore, but maybe we can, we'll try to, or something.
Or catch someone that's going to the mine or the plant, maybe.
Cause those guys are always there.
Or, yeah, Steve, why don't you ask him, cause if I ask him, he'll.
I know a couple guys out there. Both places, so, perfect, and then I ask all the time about F B M S, but my son's a, I know, very one-word answers.
Welcome to middle school.
Just keep saying that over and over.
I know, I know everything about the high school, I know everything about the elementary school.
I know nothing about the middle school.
Middle school is just.
That's cool.
That's good.
Good, okay. I don't know. Shake my head every day.
Her winter concert is tomorrow, F B M S winter concert is tomorrow.
And then, uh, Pineview is Thursday.
Thursday.
All right, with that, ten point oh four, superintendent's report.
Okay, just, uh, give you some highlights of what I've been doing, uh, this past month, I set up, uh, individual meetings with principals, directors, just to get to know them better, what they've been doing, what they might need, what, what's coming up, so, we're doing that one-on-one with quite a few people, so, that's been good. Um, then I just thought I'd let you know, we do this, we do meetings with the office staff too, to keep them in the loop, so we do that, like tomorrow, there'll be an office staff meeting, and then they do a nice job of just really looking at what they need, they're really kind of attuned to what, what, um, might come out of this meeting, so, they're kept in the loop that way. Um, let's see, the admin team's been going through the Title IX virtual training, so we've had our third and final one, um, those are recorded too, so we can go back to those. And then, uh, the admin team's been working on the threat assessment templates, we didn't get to it last admin meeting, so we're gonna be having another meeting before Christmas break, um, to go over those, they, they, sometimes, like, the training I originally had of threat assessment, they gave us kind of just the template, but we have some choices, and so the principals have been going through and looking at what pieces they like the most, and also have already used that, so we're gonna get that going together, so we have one common one. Uh, I went to the Mass Southeast Association Superintendent's Mile City this last time, they had the Montana Activiti Association, uh, person there presenting, so learned a little bit about that, kind of more or less about their office and things that they were gonna be doing to, to change it, not a whole lot of huge relevant stuff for athletics, but, um, met him. And then, uh, let's see, been going over accreditation requirements through the state Zoom, uh, just got another link today with quite a few things laid out for that, that I'll be sharing with the admin team, um, the workman's comp, uh, lady came from M S G I A, did the campus walkthroughs, and did the checks, and so I'll be getting a report from her on how all that went, what her recommendations are. And then I've been part of the quality of life committee meeting, we hosted this last one, I've been there twice, um, so they do a lot of fundraising, and last Monday night, I was serving chili for C P R D, so we, um, did some fundraising for that, they give scholarships for students, um, and let's see, it's a good, a good bunch of guys, just to, people get to know. Let's see, Tiffany came with me too, so, um, she was there with me. I attended the sub-training, we had a sub-training down here, um, that Ryan did for us, and we had quite a few, we've got some people already started now doing the follow, follow-up on the process, and then on a personal and professional note, I was right there with Jen, I completed my final requirements for my superintendent internship class, so I know what she went through, yeah, anyway, so, that's kind of been my highlights.
Very good. All right, and thank you all for everything you do, in case I don't see you, have a happy and merry Christmas. So, we appreciate everything you guys all do.
We don't have another meeting this month?
No, we don't.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we did or not.
It'll be that, that regular one in January.
January, Kristen Seavey.
Yeah.
Kristen Seavey.
Hey, I wanted to. With that.